I'd like to call this meeting for the Region 15 Board of Education to order Monday, December 9. Can we please stand for the plaidable regions? The mission of Region 15, a collaborative community committed to excellence, is to educate every student to be productive, ethical, and engaged in a global society through proven and innovative learning experiences supported by its strong community whose decision-making is based on the best interest of all students. We'll start with our senior representative, Mr. Brendan Fenn.
Good evening, everyone. At the high school last Friday, the high school sent students from the Student Council and the Athletic Leadership Council to a student leadership conference at SCSU. Students attended different breakout sessions on school culture, STEM, and more. Pop Rock's very own Luke Alpino presented as part of the SWC committee to all advisors and presidents. Also, next week at the high school is Spirit Week, and students are encouraged to dress up following the different winter themes. And additionally, band, orchestra, and corral concerts will be taking place this Tuesday at the high school. Moving on to Memorial Middle School, MMS is participating in a Toys for God Stride, where all toys will be donated to a child in need in our community. The MMS Apex Color Run fundraiser was a great success. In total, MMS raised $14,516, and this money will be provided amongst grade levels to defray the cost of field trips at the middle school. Also, Apple Middle School's winter band, chorus, and orchestra concerts are set to take place in the next two weeks. Moving on to Russian Bow Middle School, RMS Recycles had a very successful donation drive in partnership with the Sustainable South Bay. In total, RMS collected approximately $1,200 in cans and bottles. Last Friday, RMS Student Council sponsored a sixth-grade winter social and a seventh-grade winter dance. Both were well-attended, and students had a great way to kick off the holiday season with the piers. Also, RMS here tutoring is back, where students will be supporting other students in a variety of content areas during the course of the school year. Moving on to the elementary schools. At each elementary school this Friday, students and staff will support Connecticut Students Medical Center and Husky Fund by wearing pajamas to school, and they will be collecting donations. Students from each elementary school showcase their creativity and safety knowledge by participating in the fire prevention poster contest, where this annual event encourages students to think critically about fire safety and to express their ideas through art. Moving on to Gatefield Elementary School. Gatefield organized a school-wide fund drive to support the South Bay Food Bank. Gatefield was also selected as an official First and Top Donation Center again this year, and Gatefield Elementary School Chorus Club shared their musical talents with the community during the South Bay Tree and Norland ceremony this past Saturday. Moving on to Long Meadow Elementary School, LMS had their annual clothing drive to support the needy. Long Meadow is also hosting United Way to inform staff members of ways to further support our community. And then moving on to the athletic department, which achieved the starting backup at the high school and middle school for winter sports, and we wish our athletes the best of luck this year.
I may need to mention this to this group of people. See, our last time the board members discussed, discussing what we're going to discuss in the future, pay-for-play fees for athletics as well as fundraising and gate fees kind of the bigger picture of how our athletic programs are funded. I was just wondering, as a student, thanks to the student perspective. So when you come back in January, month from now, just maybe have thought of, you know, in your course theory, the team that you've heard, you know, what is your perspective, what's your perspective on pay-for-play fees or gate fees or fundraising? And if there's anything that you think we should know, is importantly considered. More to discuss.
Yes, definitely. Last round, I'll talk to some other athletes and students, get their perspectives. Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Do you happen to have a preview of what the winter themes will be for the process?
I skimmed through them.
It's okay. I don't want to put you on the spot.
Off the top of my head, I created a couple. I think one of them was dressed like a twin, and when you do the dress, you can plan on the teacher and other students. That's the same as that. One of them was wearing winter clothing with pads and bugled out. I don't know, it's actually the test is actually. Yeah, it was even not the student today, getting a schedule for it.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate it. Next, we have our student recognition.
Mr. Master, back. Come join me. So to start off tonight's meeting, we had some technical difficulties that required us to pivot a little bit, which is what all of our fall athletes have to do. We're going to recognize some of them tonight, and some of them may even show up on our screen in the near future. So, Rod, do you want to talk a little bit about the All-State athletes?
Absolutely. And since that is that time of year where we get to honor our All-State athletes and state champions. So first off, congratulations to all of them on achieving or being selected as one of the top athletes in the state of Connecticut and their respective sports. First, I would like to call up Gabrielle Carroll, who achieved All-State this year in cross-country. Can I recognize her? Next, another All-State athlete in cross-country is Madalena Miriam. Next, I would like to recognize our girls swim All-State athletes. First one that I will call up is Tanya Kanasantabu. That's the Tanya Kanasantabu. Our next swimmer is Kats Mover. Next, the three starters. Next, the number is Rowan Zid. Last swimmer is Catherine Boggs. So I'm happy for all states of these young ladies to stay here is I did it first time in my career here. All states of these ladies are repeat All-State swimmers. I made it last year, and just going to my notes, Samantha Reese and Catherine are three-time All-State athletes. But the next athlete I would like to recognize and call up, she is here, is Medina Salami. I know she had basketball practice, and that just got over, so I'm sure he probably went home. But she was selected Miss Wall for All-State in Girl Soccer. And last but certainly not least, our student representative here is Brendan Fenn, who was selected to be Boys Soccer All-State Team. Brendan was also a captain for the Boys Team this year, and I'm sure some of you know, we lost a heartbreaker in the state championship game, which would be longest game in CIAC soccer history that we unfortunately lost that heartbreaker in. But congratulations to Brendan. And next, I would like to talk about and recognize our girls swim and diving. These guys are the road warriors, as I called them throughout the season, as you all know the story well by now. Overcoming obstacles that were thrown at them did not stop them from repeating, or let me correct myself, pre-feeding, as not only SWC champions, but even more impressively, the class of the state champions. Again, this year, they nominated the class ME, destroying the competition with a total of 748 points, with their closest half a team division being Brookfield with 506 points. Congratulations to Coach Savage, Coach Clark, and Coach Williams, and all great people along here, the team members can now come up and be incredible.
And I would like to say, so while we couldn't get the pool finished in time for the girls to get actually swimming in, I do appreciate that, and since they am, they're worried, and it was their first game in the pool. And they did bring water that was saved from the former pool to make sure that the water that they wanted so many times was added to the new water. And so all of the blocks were I think, non-religious kind of things. But at Monberry High School, there may be a little bit of religion in our swimming program. But all of the blocks that they touched with the water from the old pool and the young ladies, it was not, they didn't have a time either. And all jumped into our pool or punch pool, and they all look like they warmed up since then. So I appreciate everything that parents, everybody that's went through the season to get them there. Clearly, it doesn't matter what pool they swim in, but I appreciate all you did to keep her when you went in and to be the first student in the water. So no pressure on next year, but they have a new pool now, so really fast.
All right. So can I have the motion to move into executive session, President Lachlan? Most of the Board of Education breaking into executive session for Professor Manier, Construction Manager, Finals, the GDS, PDS, exploding, and being recommended, and joined by Superintendent Smith, Dr. Chair Haddad, and Chief Mark Hennig. Great. Do you have a second? Second. Thank you, Heather. All those in favor? Any names? All right, so we're going to move into executive section.
Okay. All right, we're out of the session. And the next item on our agenda is assessment data and improvement cycle. Dr. Terry Chi put up. Thank you very much for the opportunity to share some of our assessment data. If you go to the next slide, a quick agenda, we're looking at higher level data this slide. S back our science data SATs, we'll look at some AP data. We'll go with some performance indices for the region for some of our schools. And we'll talk a little bit about the work that we're doing here in the region. And so to start off, we'll go looking at S back data. And so this first slide shows the region 15 scores for ELA for this past spring. Grades three to eight comparing that to the DURB. The small numbers underneath are the difference between the DURBs score for each of the grades compared to region 15. If you click one more time, those are some of the towns or the districts within our DURB that we pulled out. Looking again at the same thing for ELA, so third grade all the way through eighth grade. One of the things that you'll notice is that sixth grade is the one that has the largest gap between the DURBs and region 15. That thirteen point difference where everybody else had single digit differences. And so we're taking a look at what the targets were that we missed in sixth grade or some of the things that we need to improve. And we're going to look at how we can use that now in the seventh grade since those students are currently in seventh grade. If we go.
There's 36 districts that are there?
Yes. So these are, this looks at the past four years. So the students that are at that knee, or exceed that level three or level four on S back. And so that blue dark line that you see going horizontally does the break between pre-COVID and then I guess sort of post-COVID. And so you could see where we were before COVID and then the last few years. One of the things that we like to look at is cohort data. So if we look at students when they were in third grade, how did they then do into fourth grade? How did they then do to fifth grade? That black line showed that there is an increase in the amount of students that scored at the three or four. When you look at third grade in 2022, all the way up to now that we're in fifth grade in 2024. If we click one more time, the red line shows that if we look at students that were in fourth grade in 2022, down to when they were sixth grade last year, there was a decline in the amount of students. Same thing for the following year for fifth grade, sixth grade, you can see a positive increase. One of the things that was interesting, if you look at the grade five of 2022, there was a decline into sixth grade. But then from sixth grade to seventh grade, there wasn't an increase. But the reasons for the color of the lines is from the beginning of the three years to the end of the years. So we look at this data too, cohort data, to see how groups of students are doing over the course of the years that they're here in region 15. So let me do the same thing by math. So again, here's region 15 compared to the DURB, those points that are the difference between the 36 districts in our DURB and region 15. You'll see that those numbers are lower than they were for ELA. And grade seven, you'll notice actually is the DURB average. So the average here for region 15 is the DURB average. If you click again, those then are some of the districts within our DURB that we that we look at and we compare ourselves to. We can do that same cohort analysis with mathematics. We click again. And so using the same thing, the red and the blue lines to show three years of progression. We put. Here, click again, and you'll see as students move up through the grades, there's the increase in the percent of students that have achieved these RSEs. If you click again. One of the interesting things is that for 2024 in grade seven, 62% of students at least or exceed. That's the same exact percentage pre-COVID for seventh grade. So we were excited to see that at least in seventh grade, we're getting back to pre-COVID numbers. If you click again.
I have two questions.
Yeah.
So one question on the English and ELA chart. With the percentages being down, I mean, the percentage, is there a way to do the median as well as the average?
So, yes, so what you'd have to do, so just to say that this was, this one presentation is two months worth of data of number crunching. So yes, so you can go on and look on EdSight and then list all of our DURB and then find the median. And the median, if you can remind me.
One of the, one of the challenges is that the state doesn't recognize the DURB as an official comparison set. So each time you go into EDs, you have to pull the data from each of these districts. You can export a whole spreadsheet yourself, filter, reach compared to data set. Where you could look in other ways to produce some comparisons, but you get a list of 215 districts that go in and check off the 36 that are there. So like, they don't make it easy to do the DURB comparison because they actually wanted to discourage some of this third comparison. But it's kind of baked into how we look at data and how we compare ourselves. And then within the DURB of those 36, some of those districts have 12,000 students in them and some of them have 300 students in them. So then we kind of go through and this isn't an official comparison set. We picked five or six districts that are about our size. And our DURB, you could pick that comparison set a lot of different ways. So that's not an official, but just to give you an idea of some districts that are about our size as kind of in our, for the most part, geographic fusion too. But we could, we could slice that in a lot of different ways. So we're open to.
I was just thinking, I mean, somebody's like chest is real high and it might sway your average stuff. I'm curious to balance the average weight.
Yeah.
Mean or the median in general.
Well, they're high here, I will get some other places to compare.
And then my second question is, math was awesome.
Yes.
And is that, do you know why?
That's.
Compared together.
So we've been working really hard to retool our math program since 2019.
Yeah. And we'll talk a little bit later that the national trend is actually finding out scores, which is really interesting. We're like, we're opposite of that trend, which is really nice to see. If you click again, so there, like Josh said, there is a ton of data that you could spend hours looking through and analyzing and creating a picture. And so this is actually looking at our ELA, again, that pre-COVID, so that 20, that 2019 school year to post-COVID. So looking at the average in region 15 for each of the grades in 2019, the DURB average in 2019. And then looking at what that looks like right now in 2024. What you'll notice in, you know, pre-COVID, both the DURB and region 15 were in the seventies, right? 70%, 70 something percent of students were at or near exceeds. If you look now at 2024, that DURB is in the sixties, maybe seventies. And for us, region 15, we're in the fifties, maybe sixties. So you could see both with the DURB and with us, the slight decline over COVID. And so the research that's out now is calling it the long COVID effect, that there is an effect on kids that are.
All right, we are out of the session. And the next item on our agenda is assessment data and improvement cycle. Yeah. Thank you very much for the opportunity to share some of our assessment data. If you go to the next slide, a quick agenda, we're looking at higher level data. Tonight, S back our science data SATs, we'll look at some AP data. We'll go with them performance indices for the region for some of our schools. And we'll talk a little bit about the work that we're doing here in the region. And so to start off, we'll go looking at S back data. And so this first slide showed the region fifteen scores for ELA for this past spring. Grades three to eight comparing that to the DURB. The small numbers underneath are the difference between the DURBs score for each of the grades compared to region fifteen. If you click one more time, those are some of the the towns or the districts within our DURB that we pulled out. Looking again at the same thing for ELA, so third grade all the way through eighth grade. One of the things that you'll notice is that sixth grade is the one that has the largest gap between the DURBs between region fifteen. That thirteen point difference where everybody else had single digit differences. And so we're taking a look at what the targets were that we missed in sixth grade or some of the things that we need to improve. We want to look at how we can use that now in the seventh grade since those students are currently in seventh grade. If we go.
Thirty six districts that are there?
Yes.
So when that happens, most of them.
I think it's in that slide. So these are, this, this looks at the past four years. So the students that are at that knee, or you see that level three or level four on S back. And so that blue dark line that you see going horizontally does the break between pre-COVID and then, I guess, sort of post-COVID. And so you, you could see where we were before COVID and then the last few years. One of the things that we like to look at is cohort data. So if we look at students when they were in third grade, how did they then do into fourth grade? How did they then do to fifth grade? That black line showed that there is an increase in the amount of students that scored at the three or four. When you look at third grade in two thousand twenty-two, all the way up to now that we're in fifth grade in two thousand twenty-four. If we click one more time, the red line shows that if we look at students that were in fourth grade in two thousand twenty-two down to when they were sixth grade last year. There was a decline on in the amount of students. Same thing for the following year for fifth grade, sixth grade, you can see a positive increase. One of the things that was interesting, if you look at the grade five of two thousand twenty-two, there was a decline into sixth grade. But then from sixth grade to seventh grade, there wasn't any increase. But the reasons for the color of the lines is from the, the beginning of the three years to the end of the years. So we look at this data too, cohort data, to see how groups of students are doing over the course of the years that they're here in region fifteen. So then we do the same thing by math. So again, here's region fifteen compared to the DURB, those points that are the difference between the thirty-six districts in our DURB, the region fifteen. You'll see that those numbers are lower than they were for ELA. And rate seven, you'll notice actually is the DURB average. So the, the average here for region fifteen is the DURB average. If you click again, those then are some of the districts within our DURB that we, that we look at and we compare ourselves to. We can do that same cohort analysis with mathematics. We click again. And so using the same thing, the red and the blue lines to show three years of progression. Here, click again, and you'll see as students move up through the grades, there's, there's the increase in the percent of students that have achieved these RSEs. If you click again. One of the interesting things is that for two thousand twenty-four in grade seven, sixty-two percent of students at least or exceed. That's the same exact percentage pre-COVID for seventh grade. So we were excited to see that at least in seventh grade, we're getting back to pre-COVID numbers. If you click again.
I have two questions.
Yeah.
So one question on the English and ELA chart. With the percentages being down, I mean, the percentage, is there a way to do the median as well as the average?
So, yes, so what you'd have to do, so just to say that this was, this one presentation is two months worth of, of data of number crunching. Um, so yes, so you can go on and look on Edsite and then list all of our DURB and then find the median. If you can use mine.
One of the, one of the challenges is that the state doesn't recognize the DURB as an official comparison set. So each time you go into EDs, you have to pull the data from each of these districts. You can export a whole spreadsheet yourself, filter, reach compared to data set. Where you could look in other ways to produce some comparisons, but you get a list of two hundred and fifteen districts that go in check off the thirty-six that are DURBs. So like, they don't make it easy to do the DURB comparison because they actually wanted to discourage some of this DURB comparison. But it's kind of baked into how we look at data and how we compare ourselves. And then within the DURB of those thirty-six, some of those districts have twelve thousand students in them and some of them have three hundred students in them. So then we kind of go through and this isn't an official comparison set. We picked five or six districts that are about our size. And our DURB, you could pick that comparison set a lot of different ways. So that's not an official, but just to give you an idea of some districts that are about our size as kind of. In our, for the most part, geographic reason too. But we could, we could slice that in a lot of different ways. So we're open to.
I was just thinking, I mean, somebody's like chest is real high and might sway your average stuff. I'm curious to balance the average weight.
Yeah.
Mean or the median in general.
Well, they're high here, I'll get some other places we can compare them.
Yeah.
And then my second question is, math was awesome.
Yes.
And is that, do you know why?
That's. So we've been working really hard to retool our math program since two thousand nineteen.
Yeah. And, and we'll talk a little bit later that the, the national trend is actually finding those scores, which is really interesting. We're like, we're opposite of that trend, which is really nice to see. If you click again, so there, like Josh said, there is a ton of data that you could spend hours of looking through and analyzing and creating a picture. And so this is actually looking at our ELA, again, that pre-COVID, so that, that twenty, that twenty-nineteenth school year to post-COVID. So looking at the average in region fifteen for each of the grades in two thousand nineteen, the DURB average in two thousand nineteen. And then looking at what that looks like right now in two thousand twenty-four. What you'll notice in, you know, pre-COVID, both the DURB and region fifteen were in the seventies, right? Seventy percent, seventy something percent of students were at or near exceeds. If you look now at two thousand twenty-four, that DURB is in the sixties, maybe seventies. And for us, region fifteen, we're in the fifties, maybe sixties. So you could see both with the DURB and with us, the slight, the slight decline over COVID. And so the research that's out now is calling it the long COVID effect, that there is an effect on kids that are entering school. Kids that are currently in school and kids that are going into, into college, that, that COVID effect that, that it has on them and it's showing up in math in ELA.
What's the question though about that though? Why such a significant decline relative to our peers? Because we were more comparable.
Yep.
Pre-COVID and you'd like to think that it's proportionate. Clearly it's not.
Yep.
So any thoughts on that topic?
And we talked a lot, a lot of districts. There's not a direct correlation. There's a lot of factors. Teacher turnover rates matter, pre-service teacher programs matter, preschool, access to preschool matters. Uh, there, there's so many that there's not one piece. There's also some.
Access to preschool, I would say that that's a variable that's not relevant when you look at some of like fifth grade, right? The changes.
Correct. So, well, yes, no, because the, the fifth graders now, some of those fifth graders didn't have. Because they were in like preschools closed, very cold. So some of the kindergarten's entry readiness that we saw in the years past COVID. So, and, and then some of those preschools didn't reopen. Some of, so there, there's again, direct correlation, what's the factor on that? I don't know, you know, which student, how many, which community. Some of these other schools also were in different places where curriculum. So like when we talk about math, in twenty eighteen, nineteen, we were retooling our math program. And so we were kind of better positioned to bounce back in math where we had. Our literacy retooling really started in two thousand nineteen. And two thousand twenty would have been like our, our real push and then that fell off, right? Because.
And, and science is a part of the example that we get today. So, yeah, we can, we can talk a little bit more about that. If you click again, it shows the same, it showed the same thing, click one more time for math. Um, when we look at like the pre-COVID, where, you know, in region fifteen, we range anywhere from the sixties to eighty-five. Um, the DURB still in sixties and seventies currently. If you look region fifteen, we're sixties across the board and the DURBs, sixties, maybe seventies across the board. So there's a little bit more of a closing of a gap in, in the math again, which is unique here when you look across the country. If you click one more time.
Well, just bring the little, so when you look at like third and fourth grade through COVID, we're in the eighties. And, and really, had really just started retooling our math. So that wasn't necessarily just a curriculum and instruction with that. There were other factors in there. How much of that was high quality preschool? How much of that was teaching staff? Like, do that kind of was more to look back. There's so many variables in there that it's hard to tie to any one thing. Then there's other talk too, that, that long tail of COVID. There's things that nothing to do with any of our, with our society, right? Like attendance patterns are different. The, and I don't, I don't mean to minimize this. I think we have, we have a community that puts a huge amount of importance on school. But I also think people are more conscious of how much pressure we're putting on students at young ages. And it's just a different conversation. Again, I can't tell you, there's, there's a whole lot of research happening at, at institutions right now, trying to figure out where this stuff is.
So this is actually a slide that I showed when I presented the CAPS CATE conference a couple of weeks ago. Um, it was us, it was, um, New Haven, and there was one other district that shared the high dosage tutoring. That we've been doing in here in region fifteen that we received the grant from last year. And so if you remember that, that grant is almost half a million dollars to support students that were ones and twos in math. The previous school year. So this slide showed two hundred and six students where, where they were. So in, in sixth grade at Memorial and Rochambeau, same thing for seventh, same thing for eighth. One of the things that we looked at was in two thousand twenty-three, so before they entered the tutoring program the year before. Um, what was their projected growth? Depending on the score that you get on your S back test, the state has a, a chart that says, here's the amount of expected growth we're supposed to make. And so if you look at that column for two thousand twenty-three, thirty-two percent of those students at Memorial that were in fifth grade the year before made their projected growth. With the help of the tutoring program in two thousand twenty-four, sixty-one percent of those students made their projected growth. And that last column shows you what percent of those students reached a level three or four. They were, they, they met or they exceeded the state goal. Now again, remember, those students were one or two as they entered that program. And so you can look, you know, at the chart and see what percentage of students that they're broke and what percentage of students got a three or four. One of the interesting things that we talked about was, if you look at sixth grade for Rochambeau. Um, their projected growth for the year before was fifty percent. Their projected growth with the tutoring is twenty-seven percent. One of the things that we went back and looked at was attendance, just to see if athletes are in it. Attendance for those students was low. It, and it wasn't that they didn't attend the tutoring session, they just weren't in school for whatever reason. So when we talk about all the different things that come into play here, it's not only curriculum, it's not only instruction, it is attendance. There are, there are other things at play here. Um, interestingly enough, the audience at the CATE conference was really excited about that last column that showed the percentage of students that were able to get a three or four. Knowing that they were one or two when they entered, entered school that year. One of the things that we're doing this year is we're able to do the grants and to have the high dosage tutoring from October until April this year. Um, the funds run out, it's a state grant. So one of the things the state has said is that they sent all the information that we supply them with to UConn who's doing an analysis of this program. Um, and what they're hoping to say is that, you know, it shows great results. And then there might be a way for the state to continue to fund it. Or they said, if you have other ways, you can fund it, you know, more power to you. So one of the things is that if, if the results show the same that we think it's going to show from last year. It might have a budget implication if we say we want to continue this type of tutoring in region fifteen for next year because the grant runs out.
Next question, if memory serves me right, where the tutors, there's continuity in the tutors, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. And actually.
I would imagine that that plays a big part because they know the students, particularly the cohorts are the same. I don't know, that's my assumption, if you agree with that.
Yes, and absolutely. We had nine tutors last year, we have four this year, two at each of the middle schools. And their weekends, they came back, they wanted to come back to region fifteen. So we're lucky enough to have, um, the tutors that were here last year, be here again this year.
And we'll recite for part of the reason Dr. Giacchino was chosen to sit on that panel is not all school districts, if anybody's saying. So those tutors, the Kings, had orientation, they had training on our math programs.
Yeah.
They had regular meetings with our math coaches to review the math that we were teaching. Some of these tutors didn't necessarily have a sense of background and really none of them had degrees in that. So we didn't just throw them in the kit. We front loaded a lot of those work and kind of put a lot of free planning in. It'd be nice to say, here's three hundred thousand dollars, we'll buy some tutors and you're going to see the results. But it was more complex than that and involved a lot more scaffolding and kind of tearing feeding of the structure. So that's kind of the, I don't want to recite that. And these tutors were only with our kids from January to April. So this year, like when we're going to watch them from October, April, we'll know what that impact was.
Um, quick, quick question.
Yeah.
Um, first of all, this is amazing. Um, thank you for all the effort that you and everyone else put into this. Um, the comment that you made about attendance though, pretty frustrating. Um, because no amount of care or instruction is going to help if the student is not there. Um, and I feel like at the high school, they're really cracking down on attendance. Are they also doing that in the other schools as well?
Yep.
And to kind of make up for this?
Yeah, there, there are letters that go out almost monthly. I would take them from Jessica Charetto that says to parents, you know, adhere to the number of absences that your student has. You know, like we need to be careful, we're reaching a threshold. The schools have meetings about students to figure out ways to get them in school. Um, try to figure out ways when they miss school, what are we doing to catch them up? Um, so there's lots of things that we're trying to do in the school to, to mitigate, you know, the, the absentees. But last year, there were a lot of students that got sick, you know, that were absent. So.
Right. Some of this is apathy.
Yes.
Uh, but some of this, there's a lot of legitimate reason.
Yeah.
Too. And so, you know, our monthly meetings, they're focused on who's the child, what's the condition, why are they out? Is it a support issue? There's, you know, the ability of a parent to manage that child. She's going through some tough times and sometimes that's easier said than done, but just get your child to school. So sometimes I want to support the family in it because you can't just punish your child because of school. And so, you know, how do you, how do you work with that kind of the other crisis happening in, in that parent's life? To support that student and then transition them back. Um, it's a medical piece, so it's, you know, it's not a, a linear equation on your absent and you come to school. And so we have, you know, we have two social workers. We had some of these things, this, this isn't designed as breadcrumbs for budget presentations, but you do talk about. As the resource shift to some of the, why haven't we bounced back from COVID? What is the impact of the social worker and what is the impact of attendance counselors? You know, there, there are different ways to kind of approach the problems. Um, and some of them are resource dependent and some of them are more about the resources that we currently have in reality. I mean, that's a, a daily conversation.
And one of the things we knew starting in January, school year's halfway through, was that relationship, especially the middle school kids, that they need to have with the adults in their life. So, um, like Josh said, we spent a lot of time with the tutors before they actually were in the buildings. Not only teaching them the content, but also teaching them get to knowing things. So they spent a first week with the students doing things like just getting to know the kids. So there was that relationship there before we could even do the math. Because we're going to be able to do the math if they didn't feel that they were safe with a kid, with, with the person that was there. Oh, stop. It's.
Well, interesting, when UConn gets the data as I'm waiting, that's the next slide.
Yeah.
Um, just, we'll be able to look at kind of like pre-planning work that happened when we were fifteen, fifteen district, to do it. And if there's a correlation with that.
And I did share some of this with the state already saying like, you know, here are our numbers like that recalculating. Here are actually some survey of something, we did do a survey with the students to say like, you know, what did you think of the tutoring? Would you recommend the tutoring? You know, give some anecdotal stories about the tutoring. And when I sent that to the state, they were really impressed and said, like, you all made a really great job during region fifteen with the tutoring program. So that was nice to hear.
That's great.
Yeah, it was really nice to hear. So one of the things that the state looks at is not only that overall score, but they also look at the different, some groups of kids. I like to call them various groups of kids, not subgroups. Um, and so the groups that we look at are the high needs. High needs are students that are free, could be free and reduce lunch. There's students that could be special education and there's students that could be multilingual. So they're all, if you fit one of those or you fit all of those categories, you're considered high needs. So the state breaks down into that high needs category, special education category and the multilingual category. You'll see stars across or asterisks across the multilingual because we have, um, less than twenty students at a grade level or multilingual. Um, and in order to kind of like protect, protect the confidentiality of the families, because you, we could tell who those students are. They have asterisks. But, um, one of the things that we noticed is there is a gap between our high needs, our special education and our multilingual students. When we compare that to the region as an, as an average for each grade level. This year, according to the state, if you look at the gap between the non-high need students and high need students for ELA only. If the percentage of a gap is sixteen point nine percentage points, we're above that for each one of those different categories. Which then shows that we have, we have a gap that we need to close. Did you have a question?
I did.
Yes.
It's a region fifteen average, including the high needs and special needs and all regions.
Yeah.
So really the gap behind the special ed and non-categorie is a little bit higher.
Yes. Yeah. Yep. So.
Pulled out or not?
Yeah. So, um, so now we know that we have, we have some work to do. One of the things that we've been working on with special education is rewriting IP so that their goals are aligned to grade level standards. And then how are we, how are we working on that to make sure that we're scaffolding it so that the special education students or the, um, high need students can, um, reach those grade level standards? One of the other things, thanks to the board last year, is that we put in another multilingual teacher. And so we, we've broken that out where, um, we have multilingual teachers that work at the elementary level. And then we have a multilingual teacher that works at the secondary level. That allowed all the multilingual teachers to be able to work inside classrooms. Um, with the teachers, which we hadn't done before. We hadn't really had a multilingual teacher be able to work in and in every classroom to adjust the instruction, to, to modify some of the assessments. Until we're able to do that for the first time this year because we have that part.
You have the question.
Yeah.
So undoubtedly, right, the addition of that resource is going to add value. I'm not questioning that. But because you can't show that data, how are you managing the privacy?
Yeah.
Are you able to do that?
We're able to see, yeah, we're able to pull up, we're actually able to pull it out by nature. Yeah. Well, um, we don't know yet because it's only been a few months at school. So, um, um, we'll know more when we get S back. But we also have the last links that ML students have to take. If they're receiving ML services, they take that to S. No, thank you. Um, and so, um, we'll be able to see that, we'll take that soon in the winter. But we also have our N W B A data. So they took it in the fall, we'll take it again once we come back from the seventh grade. So we'll be able to track that as we go, in addition to the assessment that teachers are doing in their classroom.
So the definition of high need again, is that, does it mean anyone with an IP or anyone with a like?
So all I need students fit one of three categories. They, they, they've been identified as special education. They are qualified for as a multilingual level or they qualify for free or reduced lunch.
And you could be all three of those. And you're, like, you could be free reduced lunch, you could be multilingual, and you could be special ed, and, you know, or even one of those.
But should be special ed, what is that called?
You have to identify through the process and identify that you have a significant word. Yeah.
Not all, back to your point now.
Yeah.
Does that mean that any child that has an ID, is it?
Yes.
She's high, high need.
Yes.
Okay.
You could have an ID for, there's a scale.
Yes.
Barely have an, have an E.
Yes.
But in, there's a state mandated database that all of our students in nineteen are in. Few qualify for that system, it's a special education. There is a very small percent, less than one percent that fall into a subset of that special education that do not take the smarter balance assessment. But that can, that has to be less than one percent of this.
And the next slide shows the exact same thing except for math. And, and, um, there is a difference in that gap, um, according to the state, between the high needs and the non-high need students. It's actually higher, it's eighteen point two percentage points. But again, if you look at ours, or there is that gap there, um, between a big and a big age average and different populations within, within.
This isn't a new, this isn't new this year.
Nope.
The problem that we've been leaning into over the last year or four years. Um, right, most of the state has that saying. And the more high, high achieving students you have, the more possibility for that gap to exist. The shift we've made with adding in those SRBI interventionists of pushing students in to the classroom. There was tier one, uh, structure that we built in are designed to help support that gap. Well, not supportive, but we do so.
So let's skip a little bit to science. Um, would you know the NGSS is only increased by eight and eleven? So again, this shows some of, um, the towns in our DURB, um, our region fifteen average for the grades five, eight, eleven compared to our DURB. One of the interesting things is that, um, this is the first time that middle school, um, is, is above the DURBs or in seventy-four. And if you look, uh, grade eleven is, is above the DURB also. Um, region fourteen, so that data suppressed. So again, if there's, um, i- if there's anything that would, um. With, with, um, I guess, per confidentiality, they suppress the data. And so for seventh, for eighth, and for some reason for region fourteen, that's where else. Yeah.
And it's like the highlights, you mentioned Chester before, but saying the three.
Well, it's, well, it is interesting because we did have a call from a district, which I won't say, who asked what we're doing in eighth grade to receive those, uh, those scores. And so one of the things we talked about was the curriculum that we implemented. So, um, right after COVID, one of the things that we implemented was Open Sai Ed. And that was at the request of teachers. Um, and so we have, we had a new curriculum that's more aligned to the way S, um, NGSS watching the team with the, um, the cross disciplinary, um, the phenomenon. All of the way that they, they expect NGSS to be, to be taught. The other thing, they also asked for with our middle school schedule because they wanted to know how much time is dedicated, um, to science in each of the grade levels. So we sent them copies of.
For a million dollars?
Schedule, I know. So, um, so I will not collaborate. Um, but it was nice to, it was nice to have someone ask me like, what are we doing in region fifteen? And, you know, we have a copy of their schedule. But so, um, so that's what shows again a little bit above the, above the DURB this year. So again, we could take a look at that high need group. They, the state also does the gap, um, for science to seventeen point nine percentage points. Um, is that gap between the high needs and, um, the non-high needs? And, and you'll see again, like that, that shows up here, that's that gap. Um, and then if we take a look at like pre-COVID, so two thousand nineteen was the first year that NGSS, uh, that the state gave to NGSS assessment. And so if you look back in two thousand nineteen, um, you'll see that, you know, eleventh grade, um, was high here in region fifteen. You know, middle schools, which, you know, coming up this year, so eighth grade. You know, middle schools, which, you know, coming up, uh, this year, so, uh, eighth grade is showing a little bit more above the, above the DUR, which is nice to see. But again, it's, it was a new curriculum, um, we've been, you know, we did change our schedule, but we have had a lot of training for the teachers on Open Sai Ed. We're waiting to see if Open Sai is with something for elementary school, um, we don't know, but, um, and see hopefully in the future they will.
So first year wasn't the test like optional or something like that?
There was one year, it was, yeah, there was one year that was pretty optional, you could take it and it's, it, uh, report the scoring. But in nineteen, the official cutoff, that you actually had to start. Um, and if we move to high school, so that, um, the school day SAT, um, looking at the past, um, four years, the percentage of students that are at that need and exceed, and then that average score for both reading and math. And that blue line again is the line that's like a pre-COVID and then a post-COVID. Um, um, one of the things that was interesting is, it, on November eighteenth, in the Darian times, the, the title of the article there said that Connecticut's math, SAT master's scores are slipping, that was the title of the article. And they talked about how, um, in twenty twenty four, so this past school year, most Connecticut school districts saw, um, a decline in the percent of students that were at that needs and exceeds. So from the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year to the twenty-three, twenty-four, there was a decline in the map. Um, he said only twenty districts within the state of Connecticut did not show a decline. And we are one of the twenty districts that did not show a decline. So we went from fifty-four percent in twenty twenty-three up to fifty-seven percent for math in twenty twenty-four. So we were one of those twenty school districts that actually increased, um, in our math from twenty-three to twenty-four. But if you click again, um, and one more time, um, we'll look at the DUR again. So here are the percentages, um, for, um, reading and math, pre-COVID, two thousand nineteen to post-COVID. And there's a four-point difference, um, in two thousand nineteen between the region and, and DUR for reading. And plus ten points, we did ten points better in math in, uh, prior to COVID. If we look at twenty twenty-four, there's only one percent difference between us and, um, the DUR for twenty twenty-four reading. And we're up by eight, um, above the DUR for math.
Long tail, you can look at the pre, post, cool math rates at high school and all that, the DUR's average. Again, DURs either pretty high performing DUR, state wide, like, that's still higher than almost the same, but it's significantly different.
And so this slide is just, is the score, not the percent of students that are, um, these are the, the scores. And you'll see there's about a nine-point difference, um, between us and the DUR for reading, and then we're above by fifteen for, for the math. Which holds true like that, you know, the, the strength in math that's going from the elementary middle and high school. And so if you click one more time, um, we can do that same, one more time, go, one more time. We can do that same comparison for the SAT for the, the, the high needs, the specialized and the multilingual learners. Um, again, that same percentage, um, points of by the state for the gap.
Some of this, um, we brought up the PNC restructuring, uh, some of our, um, math classes.
Yeah.
Um, is to address some of the gaps that share.
So, um, so last summer, we had some curriculum writing called, um, essentials, one for math and essentials, um, two for, uh, for English. And so, um, it came, it came through PNC, and one of the things that we did was we wrote curriculum for students that were in ninth grade, were in special ed. Um, to be able to get the math that they need to be able to do well on, on the SAPs. So we, we rewrote curriculum, making sure that we're aligned to grade level standards. The high school, um, is redoing their SRBI structure. Again, that additional, um, ML teacher, he actually teaches a class up here, co-teaches a class up here, um, for students that are, um, ML learners. But in addition to that, goes into the content area of classrooms and works, and works with that teacher to either modify assessments or assignments to make sure that the students are able to do that. So again, not having that extra teacher has been really helpful.
Just to clarify, the goal is not to have students, uh, do well on the SAP. Goal is to keep them grade level standardness, and SAP is a trailing indicator on how well we've done that. So the retool is to make sure our instruction and curriculum are aligned with grade levels of the state. And the test helps validate that.
So another piece of data we can look at is advanced, and so, um, this slide, um, is very interesting in the sense that, um, it's the percent of high school students taking AP exam old grades. Um, and so it'll be over the past, um, few years, how that percentage has, has, has changed, only a little. So in two thousand twenty, we had one thousand one hundred and forty-four students here, um, at the high school. Last year, we had, um, we had nine hundred and seventy, so it's about a hundred and seventy-four student difference. But the percent of students that are taking AP exams really hasn't changed much. Um, and if you look at the percent of those students who have scored three or higher, um, it went up by eight percentage points, so from eighty to eighty. And the, and, um, um, we've, we've started seeing after, um, you know, a slight decline in the number of exams. It is working its way back up to seven hundred eighty-eight exams at the beginning. So that's out of, um, all the students that are taking AP exams. And we look at the next, uh, slide, out of those students, these are all the, um, scholar, uh, awards that we've received. Um, and a lot of those may be familiar to you. One of them that may not be, because it was new to us this year, is that last one, the AP, the AP international diploma. And so that says it's granted to a student who scores a year higher on five or more AP exams that must fulfill four content areas. So the four content areas are pretty impressive. It's, uh, it has to be an AP world language class or an English exam, but it has to be in two different languages. That's the first content area. The second content area has to be an AP exam that's offered, that's offering a global perspective. So that's, um, like art history, that's like human geo, that's like macroeconomics. So that's the second content area. The third content area that they have to take in is either a math or science or computer science, um, AP course. And the fourth content area has to be an additional AP exam. It can't be in English or world language, but it could be in Latin. And so, um, then the student sends their AP scores to a university outside the US. And so we have one student that did that last year, and that's, that's been our first, uh, when I've talked to states, it's weird that we, that we've never held that. So I thought that was pretty interesting. This next slide was only looking at students that are in eleventh and twelfth grade. And it's those students in those grades that reached the benchmarks or got a three or higher on the exam, or they obtained dual credit, um, enrollment, which is ECE courses that we've been talking about, um, at PNC last year and this year. So if you, uh, look at region fifteen, we, um, we had three hundred and twenty students, um, out of a total of five hundred and twenty-eight in eleventh and twelfth grade. That ends up being about sixty-one percent of the students, um, that were able to do that, that they got the credit, um, or they were able to, uh, get a three or higher on an AP test, or they had that dual enrollment. And again, there are those, um, the towns that we've been looking at, um, throughout the course of this presentation. One of the things that we've been talking a lot about is that while sixty-one percent is free, um, we'd actually like to have more students that are able to get credit or take a dual, you know, a dual enrollment class. And so, um, one of the things that you may have noticed if you're on PNC is that we've been bringing, um, a few ACE classes last year and this year to include more opportunities for students to be able to do this. We need the classes for students to be able to take and, uh, and obtain that credit. And one of the things that like Josh and I have been talking about is, um, that this is a great marker to see how students are going to do once they hit college. And so every student should be able to have the opportunity to take one of these courses by providing more ECE courses. We're able to provide that opportunity for students.
Research says that if you take AP class or an ECE class, even if you don't do well, your chances of doing well your freshman year in college go up significantly. So while eighty-five percent of our students go to college, or about, you know, twenty-four percent of those students, college, their freshman year is their first experience with a college level course. So I would tell you that we want to grow this number so that every student who goes to a four-year school has the opportunity and, um, kind of the encouragement to take a college-level class before they get there. And if that means that the number of students, this people take, quit you when I say that, the number of students seeing a three or four go down, I'm okay with that a little bit if this number comes up. Because if you're going to struggle with a college class, I'd rather you do that here where we can support you than next year when you're on your.
No, I was just looking, it's two slides for four, I know it's overall N for, um, for percentages of students included. This one is just eleventh and twelfth, but it contains AP and ECE. Approximately, I put it in the N, not in a percentage, so I just, what's the percentage AP and ECE approximately represented on this slide?
Like how many each?
It should be.
So the challenge, I say, yes, so the challenge with this is this is the method that the state uses on the next gen accountability. The other method, the AP, the thing is not reversed, right?
Yeah.
Um, the AP uses when they look at AP, okay, scholars.
I'm okay with that, I understand the different differences. I'm trying to tie this back to your comment earlier about the ECE classes. So I get a sense that we have quite a lot of students that are taking AP, we have a lot of high percentages, and I think that that's represented. I don't know the N.
Yeah.
Uh, I know the number of exams, right, but I don't know how that correlates to number of students. And so, um, this is students that are taking those. So I'm just trying to understand, like, what, how do the numbers compare students? And then how's it compare AP versus ECE? Because in my mind, that also influences from a curriculum perspective, how the needle swings, right? And what we're offering, to your point to be successful.
Further complicated that is part of the reason, um, when you look at the number of exams, so those are.
Exactly, that's why, it's hard for me to, if this slide was a two later, where we're talking numbers of students, this is number of exams. So it's the three twenty, the eight thirty-seven could be three hundred students. But then you find this slide, you've got three hundred and twenty AP and full enrollment out of eleven, twelfth grade. So I'm just trying to understand how it compares this slide, number of students with eleven and twelve AP and ECE. Sorry.
No, no, it, it's five.
It's hard.
Correct, this, the five twenty is the number of, uh, junior and senior, total number of junior and senior students that individually could take at least one class or exam. The thirty-five percent is based on the nine hundred and seven aspects. But the numbers below that is a duplicate count, where some of those nine hundred students are taking five AP classes and some are taking none.
So that's nine, so nine hundred students on the slide. What it.
Yeah, this slide here, about nine hundred and seventy.
Thank you. About same, fine.
Yep, no, it's okay.
Nice.
Yeah, and so part of the reason with all of this data is, and, and when we kind of film into that next gen accountability scale, that's the thing. Trying to create common metrics and to, to compare school districts of all shapes and sizes. Because all of these are kind of like pupil account, map, you can count. Your question, like AP versus ECE, like that's not a metric right now that's measured, but ECE is a pass rate. Not always, that's not an exam, but say whether AP is a national or a state.
But to your point, starts with assuming people for success. Totally define that, I just, I was struggling with the percentages or some numbers, so thank you.
Well, the next year.
Sure.
The next year, I'll play it off, I even want to.
No, okay. Um, so the, the next generation, I guess, the system is a system that state set up, that has quote indicators that are all listed there. And, and so it measures how the district is preparing students for life. So whether that's college, whether that's career, whether that's the military. And so, um, you'll look at the, the twelve indicators there, and you'll see that, um, they're, they're weighted. Um, and they come up with the score that region fifteen is eighty-one point one percent compared to the state's seventeen point eight. In addition to that, um, one of the things, if you click again, it'll show is the gap between, um, the high needs.
Just to point out, the, the state does provide a target, that's not necessarily an expected target. Um, they do have a, we used to have a process, and it's still there, of us growing into that.
There is.
Um, but I think it's an, it's an aspirational target, I think it's one we want to hit. But there is conversation now, like, that chronic absentee rate was a pre-COVID number of five percent. Uh, and I recognize as I'm looking over your shoulder, that when we put two slides on a page, this slide itself is really complicated.
Yes.
I apologize for that. Um, but, um, you know, some of this, this has been out for two, since two thousand nineteen, I believe, and eighteen, the first year. Um, there's a committee that is studying these metrics to see if some of them need to be recalibrated, um, or readjusted for the targets. But either way, um, you can look at the state, uh, the average percent of, uh, districts across the state, that's the seventy point eight. Then you can hit an eighty-one point one. Sorry.
So at the, no, okay, at the bottom of that is, is this whole, um, portion of the chart, which shows the ELA performance gap, it'll talk about math performance gap, science, and then graduation. And so again, we'll look at that, at the non-high need students, the high need students, and then they'll figure out the side of that gap. And so if we are, um, above the state, um, gap, it'll show us as having an outlier. So, um, and it'll, it'll put a Y there for yes, and then put it in pink. Um, and, but if you look at the ELA performance, we're one tenth of a point away from, um, the state, uh, the state, uh, gap. So we have seventeen percent, they were sixteen point nine. So, um, uh, so that shows that there is a discrepancy between, um, a small one, but there is a discrepancy between our, our, um, ELA performance, between our, our students. But if you click one more time, um, what we put there is, um, the performance index for the region for the last five years. And so, um, and I just want to point out that the way the state put it there is, that's two thousand eighteen to nineteen, nineteen to twenty, twenty to twenty-one, twenty, or twenty, twenty-one to twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-three to twenty-four. So that last one, that eighty-one point one that says two thousand twenty-three, really is the twenty-three, twenty school, or twenty-four school year.
There's no tax.
Yeah, so, and, and it matches up to, it was in the previous slide, which is that eighty-one point one, um, for the, the index, the index.
And we showed you by grade, some of the gaps. Uh, when you roll it up by district, you see different kind of gaps. So we're less extreme when you're rolling up.
So now to look at that, that school performance index, so this was a, a, a text for the region. So, um, this first one is for game field. And so those little stars, um, above there are, when they were, uh, labeled as school of distinction. And so this past, uh, school years of two thousand twenty-four, um, uh, GES is a school of distinction. And so they're a school of distinction for a couple of reasons. Number one, they had high performance and high growth for all students in both math and ELA. And they had high growth for their high need students in math. And so when we talk about that academic growth for all students in math, it was over ninety percent. And for ELA, it was over eighty-two percent, it was eighty-two percent. For the high needs group, um, for that academic growth in math, it was over eighty-two percent. So they're listed as a school, um, of distinction. They were the top five percent of, of schools in, in the state. If we click, L M E S, they have that, um, they're highlighted with a couple asterisks, we can click one more time. Um, because what you'll notice is, um, that twenty-two, twenty-three school year, they had a relatively high index, they were eighty point one. The reason they were not listed as a school of distinction is because there were, their gap in mathematics, um, was bigger than the gap that the state had. And so that, that. Yeah, it wasn't by much.
The, which, when you do the, the calculation, it's really like one or two cities. And so like, while I appreciate the school of distinction, um, demarcation from the state, you don't overly celebrate that. And when you don't, it, I'm not, we don't kind of overly, you know, because it's a little bit arbitrary based on where everybody else is. Again, I think it's good to know we're high performing, but the idea that one school makes it and one school doesn't, in, in a school district in a given year, there's lots of factors to that. And so we put them on here, but our question with all of our schools is, what are we doing well, and what do we need to work on? Uh, and while it's nice that we have that, I don't want to take anything away from any of our schools. We don't linger on that too long, we don't press T-shirts, because it's an every year kind of thing. When we get to a place where we're sustaining it every year, um, then I think we'll maybe rest it with district. When we're kind of in that top five percent as a district. Uh, but in, in a given year, there are different cohorts of students, uh, and different tasks to give to teachers. So I just, um, I get uncomfortable sometimes with this, because, uh, people make overly simplified judgments about what could be two tenths of a percent for the three children that struggled that year, or, uh, one child was having, you know, a tough day. And so I don't necessarily, again, we're listed by two tens, um, I think it's too fine, you mark each other. So.
And so, um, your, M E S, you could, we're trying to see, as I said, we're on there, and, and they were, as you remember, the school distinctions last year.
So like, and just, again, kind of point out, and I don't want to linger on it, eat it up, but the actual overall performance gap, score, score in a given year may not, you know, like, I know I've kind of forgotten L M S and AP last year, is that L M S. And now I've kind of forgotten L M S and A P E S last year is that L M S outscored the school, but didn't make school distinction. Because they had a subgroup that had, and and if you don't have, um, ninety five percent of your student taking the test. You're out of the category and if you miss in any of those subgroups with a gap, you're out of the category. So, um. You know, I just want to celebrate the work happening in all of our schools, um, on every given year.
So while these are the, um, secondary schools, you could one more time. An interesting thing to point out is for this past year, um, M M S. Um, has a higher, um, performance index than they did pre-COVID. So, um, so, um, we're excited to see that. Other schools are working towards, um, getting back to the pre-COVID battles.
Oh, really? Across the board, you'll see like.
And so this took, uh, this is a slide that takes into, um, consideration the next generation accountability results for the districts that we've been talking about. And so one of the things, uh, one of the interesting things is that if you click one more time, as a school district. Um, our accountability index was higher than eighty three percent of the school districts in Connecticut, which means. That, um, our performance index falls in the top seventeen percent of school districts in the state, um, as, as a region.
And that is something to definitely celebrate, right? Absolutely. And that's just amazing. Just very proud and thank you so much.
That's how we're headed to Monroe. We talked about Monroe a couple of weeks ago.
You know, though, so mainly, um, we don't, on all the other slides, we include more towns that we've.
It was funny, I I was thinking that, um, one of those, I'm probably happy with it because the margin was even higher, I believe. So. Um, yeah, so both of them were below us, but, um, I I didn't notice that until we were done. Um, but that would only make this look better. Not that, um, uh, no, no disrespect to our colleagues and other visitors.
And so while all of that is great news, um, so these areas, um, to work on, there's only areas of focus. And so if you click one more time, um. There are pockets of excellence within every classroom year in region fifteen, within every grade level, within every content area in the schools. And really, our work is to support and empower teachers. So that every classroom, every grade level, um, every content area, every school achieves excellence every year. But that's, that's our work to continue to grow everybody. And so, um, some of these, the next few slides you probably have, um, seen and remember from. The retreat, we talked a lot about, um, the work that we were doing this year, and that work continues. And so it is the implementation of the phonics program, um, in K two, um, and words their way in grades three through five. We talked a lot about the illustrative math that, um, was something that teachers asked for. And so now that is K eight, that we're able to do that. The great thing about, um, illustrative math is it has various tangency points. So any student at any academic level is able to. Work on those math problems and we're able to help them then get to the, the grade level standards. Um, and to the board, we're able to put math coaches in, um, each of the elementary schools and and Josh and I received emails from teachers. Thanking us for putting the math coaches, um, in each of their buildings so they have access to a coach full time rather than part time. Um, we're continuing with, um, our units of study leaders, workshops. But one of the interesting things is last year. One of our ITLs at the elementary level went to, um, the state's social studies conference and came back so. Excited about a program that was shared there and asked if we could pilot it. So. Last year, we called the company, said, we have, you know, like, we asked, you know, one teacher to pilot it, would you be okay? And they said, yes, you could do that. So at the end of the school year, as, um, this teacher talked to more teachers. They said, well, we wanted to try it too, and we tried it. So this year, we have, um, quite a few teachers that are piloting a new social studies, um, resource. Um, that they seem to like so much that they asked if they can continue piloting for the full school year. We first started out, we'd like to pilot it for a couple of months and see how that goes. So they did ask if they can have it for the rest of the school year, and we said yes. So one of the things we've been asking them to do is to, um, to give us feedback on that. And they think that's something that. We should look further into, uh, next year. So again, that may be something that shows up in, in, um, in the budget. So I just wanted to make you aware that we have. Some teachers who are, who are working on that and using it. And again, the two, um, M L teachers were, um, last year, they were split among seven schools. The two elementary teachers are now split between, um, two schools each. So they're split among the four elements of the school, which actually allows them time. To be able to work more with teachers and work more with students. At the middle school level, again, continuing with the map, we, as of December second, we have a literacy coach. So this, uh, beginning of the school year, we did not have a middle school literacy coach. Um, so, uh, she started, we're really excited about having her on board. We've been working with higher level questioning work in ELA and social studies. Um, POM and Core, when that came out a few years ago, talked about the depth of knowledge. And so that every question that someone asks. Ranges between a level one, which is a basic, um, question, all the way up to a level four, which is really about an analysis. Um, uh, you have, you have analysis questions, type questions. And so we've been doing some professional development with teachers. In ELA and social studies, on how do you ask the higher level deeper questions rather than just asking the who, what, where, when, how, why questions, which are considered a level one? We've been working a lot with data. So how do we collect data from students and and how to use then that data? To, uh, to then change our instruction or alter our instruction to meet the needs of our students. We talked a little bit about how some of us went to the model schools conferences past summer and, um, we're using, um, and getting professional development in the five essentials of school improvements, or the middle schools are doing that. And so we've had one session with, um, H M H right now, and they're coming back again in, um. In January to work with our teams. And so teams consist of, uh, the principals, um, and department chairs. And a couple of teachers from each of the buildings, um, to learn more about this. And then again, we have that secondary M L teacher that we did not have before, who actually now works in the classrooms with middle school teachers. Um, on, you know, how to make accommodations for middle students. We didn't have that before this year. And at the high school level, um, again, that work on, um, on, um, data. Um, looking at, uh, an analysis of the higher level, um, um, data that we have, like PSATs, and then like, what do we do with that data? And what does that tell us? They're continuing to work with their M E S, um, process. And they're also working through their intervention in credit recovery. They, um, set up a peer review attendance structure. Um, so to work on those students that have high, um, high, um, missing, um, high absentee, uh, rates. And then again, that, that M L teacher that's working in the classrooms with teachers. In addition to all that, some of the things we've been doing is working with the interim assessments that that smarter balance provides for us. And so that is not only a way to get data in the meantime before spring happens. But it's also a way to see how students are making progress on the standards that, that would, that would deepen their breakthrough.
So, yeah. Thank you so much. Right? Any questions? Any other questions?
Um, first off, I had, I actually very much, uh, and I, the presentation, yeah, just from a presentation perspective. So this was just perfect for me, which means I'm sure that was like. Good luck with that. But, um, in terms of the structure, the format, the choice of the data you presented, the length, like the internal comparisons, you know, my. Then ourselves, that's with, uh, with the other towns, um, the region fifteen and the dirt. And then just having like six, six or so, you know, I'm sure. It's fine enough, you know, representative sample of, of other dirt towns. Um, so that that was great. Um, and like doing the big breakdown during the retreat. And then having the, um, sort of this summary here and where we now look at the, also the comparisons of the other towns. So I think that's kind of all kind of coming together. I think I like this, the way that this is happening now. So, so I'm, I think we should stick with this, my opinion, um. Uh, the, um, certainly the highlights for me were, uh, math. Uh, the science especially, I think, when you like sciences.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, the S D Ts, um, the next gen two, I know is a newer, um, metric, uh. That, you know, we don't, we don't want to talk about it, like, because it only exists within Connecticut, but, um. And it's, I, I, I liked it. I'm pleased to see that. I don't just like it because we're doing well or heading better as our next gen, but I think it's, it's a good, uh, it's a set of good metrics. Would say, uh. If. If I, last year, my quote was, I was. I'm uncertain for the first time, you know, all the years in the board, I felt like, you know, just. Was not seeing the light at the end of the tunnel, but I think, um, this, this presentation or the data, I think, really turned it around. Um. You gave the whole presentation with a smile. We're usually always smiling, but you know, it's just, it's, it's like on your face, as you should have. Um, certainly there, you know, if the, the one caveat would be, you know, the ELA is, is of course a concern. I'm sure this is new, um. As well, or do you, uh, and and from my perspective, my level, like, I kind of still, you know, like, like the right to read and sort of is that. If you, you know, had, I al- I've always wondered, like, having jumps to something like a canned program. Would be the, you know, but in a different position right now, I don't know. Um, I also, um, liked how you. Wrote it out in the, the board, in the, um, handout, and gave us a lot of pride. Um, all the specifics at grade level, like, yeah, grade level, like what you were doing. And that's great to read. And then I think, like, we don't need to go over that here, but people have questions, they can come to the chat room. Um, I would say, um, as you were asking about the other thirty two counts, you definitely have to look at that site like you do every time. Which, it's, it's fine, but yeah, and you'll see how it is hard to pull out certain information. Um, but if you, you know, if you can, if you want to dump everything into a spreadsheet and, and look at. Um, I used to do that because I was really nervous about how we were going to be performing, and I actually did not do that this week. So just, that's, you know. The personal, um, and then I would just say, uh. Uh, I'm glad there wasn't any type of math needed. Like, again, I was in the retreat, which is fine, but that's an internal tool and I don't, I don't, I don't make this in the air. And then lastly, um. Uh, I would just say too, I was thinking of your question too, and and that's come up before in terms of. The, you know, maybe we're not pouncing back, um, from COVID as fast as other districts. So I think. By the time they're seniors, and, you know, maybe because they're less affected by COVID. But, um, my answer to, to, I feel is that, um. On this day, the districts, I'll call me, it's institutional, like, lack of cohesion when it was at its worst, I feel was kind of. That trough was right when we brought the superintendent on board, and then I feel like. Then COVID hits, I feel like it was, it was kind of, kind of broke, and it was harder, harder to, to fix us as we placed those COVID challenges. So in my mind, that's, that's what I think. Is that, you know, it's like, it's many years to kind of, kind of breakish, and then as we started to come out of programs that were being, and the. The ideas of the plans and everything that you've done, like, got a bit derailed by, by COVID, as, as you said. But I, I think. I think that was sort of sweeping institutional, that's why, why we're having, why, why we're seeing some of those. So, uh, again, I was less, I was concerned last year, um, that this was, which it started out with ELA, so I'm like breathing it like. And then, and then it just got better from, not that, you know, but I mean, that, you know, like, stronger, but then it got much, much better as the report went on. So it was, it was, I was right after last night. Thanks.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Tom.
I am, would say the same thing, Steve did. The whole time I was in the presentation, I was thinking how much I appreciated the format. And the way you presented the data, and, um, it's a really good example, I feel like, of hearing our questions and concerns from prior years. And bringing them into this year's presentation. Super appreciative of that. Um, we were talking beforehand about like that competitive set of schools and like. You know, in case you haven't noticed, it's a very competitive board, and we're a bunch of competitive people here. So. Whether you were going to put it in the presentation or not, we'll end up doing that anyway. So I appreciate you putting that, we'll call it a pure institution, I'm a bit upset, but. I really enjoyed that. Um, congratulations, uh, a great job on G E S of all of our schools, obviously showing that growth. Um, I think a, an interesting kind of, uh, piece, like, in the next iteration of this. Um, Mr. Smith made a point about how that, um, next gen. Is still comprehensive and it gets summed up into that one number, um, but it's thirty something, twenty something different categories. Uh, I would love to see maybe next time around, how we look at one of those, if there's any insights to draw. Maybe give us the same example of like, hey, in this school, we noticed, you know, we were really flagging this area. Here's. The action that we're trying to improve that year over here, um, rather than just focusing on the big. Um, and then the last question I have for you is, on the second to last slide, you talked about a. Uh, peer attendance review structure. You talk a little bit more about what, what that is.
Yeah. Yeah, we talked about, so that the high school are putting together, um, a committee, um, where they're going to look at, um, student attendance.
That.
They're going to look at the, the students that flat on, on those, um, absentee reports.
But.
Um, and put together, um, your students on a committee to then take a look at some of the data.
Of course.
Yeah.
Very cool.
I have one question, if I can. There was a lot of conversation last year, compared to time without coaches, yeah. And on your second to last slide, you wrote it, some of it before, you talked about the fact that, uh, I think the literacy coach started in December. Can you speak a little bit, um, why? It was a late entry, and I'm, I'm focusing in on this because of your earlier comment, where I think you hit down, you're already halfway through.
Yes.
Whether their challenge has been identifying talent, hiring, onboarding, because where I'm going with this is, it clearly there was a, a. Sense of conversations in a relative medium, the district. I'm just wondering, you know, we are one third or one half every year young, and that teacher, that coach is just. Getting to know the organization, the students, the needs. So I would imagine the learning curve is rather steep. Um, so can you speak to that a little bit?
Would you say yes?
I still get the valid question.
No, 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 you, you're, you're, that's in a further, um, complicate that is that position was not seen. Consistency over the last three years. So that has been a place of recruiting, retaining, identifying, has been extremely difficult for us. Um, those, you just have a gun supported that we brought in other sports, it kind of brings the gap to the same. Um, we, um, department chair and the administration, um, the person that. As we used last year to help coach, the coach that we had, the outside person, uh, we use as a direct service, um, to kind of bridge that gap. Uh, that is, and honestly, I think, um, one of the challenges, especially when we look at that, like. Our fifth grade, the sixth grade, we see a pretty good cloud. Um, and in this issue, we've seen it increase by eighth grade, but that's been kind of an arc that is not, that's not a pattern for us. Uh, which in some ways also factors into why we maybe. Didn't just hire the first person that came across our radar, that we really feel that. Hiring the right person was important, um, but finding the right person, it's not, it's not a complete unicorn, but there's not a lot out there that had the skill set. And one of the things that was important to us in this process was to make sure we had people that, um, had experience at a middle school level. Um, and maybe we weren't asking them to transfer elementary or high school skills to a middle school. Um, which does, again, further limit talent pool when we're starting.
So, just a consideration as you start moving into the budget cycle. Um, if tho- if those types of complexities are known, if we could call those out on any pre reads or presentations, I think from a. Um, uh, in implementation and the feasibility of implementation becomes a very important part of the conversation. Because I think, to what you were saying earlier, I would say, we're not necessarily competitive. I think we're very. Attuned and keen on striving for operational excellence. And we certainly have that. Conversation when we were going back and forth over the return on investment and the costs associated with the coaches. And if there are external caveats and variables that influence our ability to actually retain that talent, I think it's an important dimension of the conversation. It's for consideration.
I, I appreciate and acknowledge, and we've talked about this in lots of places. You know, we don't probably have facility, right? And there's kind of a unicorn piece of that. And, and the same thing with like data person, positions that we've tried in the past. Um, and there is kind of this competition, um, really big school districts, um, can. Access a talent pool that the media and smaller sized school districts have difficulty. And so, you know, attracting is one and retaining is the other. Um, and, you know, and Steve's talking about spreadsheets. Like, I can think of some people that, um, are capable of doing that work. And we looked at a lot of our, like, price points and salary, trying to attract those folks. And so. Um, well, that is one of the struggles. And, and really, our key data person is, is Dr. Chippeta and. And her team that go out and try to crunch these numbers on their own. Uh, but there's not a person in this district that wakes up every day whose job is to crunch some of this data. Uh, and that is a challenge for us. You know, and we're going to look, we have a team trying to look at warehouses now, where they've been looking. That may show up in the budget presentation. that may show up in the budget presentation. But that warehouse, if we don't have somebody that can sit in private seat, the tool becomes not that useful, you know, and so these are kind of, um, when we talk about kind of cost benefit analysis, uh, do we put this position in the budget, and then appreciate support. If we can't hire that person, it doesn't really help us, right? And so how do we kind of prioritize and strategize about what goes into that budget, and what's nice to have, and isn't gonna be there now? So I just appreciate that kind of recognition, um, and very happy to kind of be transparent if we have that conversation. The other two insights, whatever it's on, so the short answer to that is the growth indicators are the places that have the most, um, opportunity cost for us. So the growth indicators in that next gen are weighted twice as much as your performance, performance weighted fifty percent, rate was rated at a hundred percent. Um, our, our overall performance is pretty good. One of the challenges is as more of your district comes out of format, like the growth of every student every year becomes a bit of a challenge, and so a lot of the work we're doing with, um, classroom instruction is looking at, like, again, every student every day, how does every student grow? And it's not just enough to say that, you know, seven percent of my class got a three on their AP exam. How many of those students are gonna grow a hundred percent in what they can do in back to the high school, the bad method, because the state could have a lot of growth metrics around SEP, but all that growth metric is grade three to grade eight in math in the LA, and there's a lot of opportunity for us to, to make gains there, that, that again, are weighted double. So if we're playing the strategy game, um, that is where all, all the points are.
Well, to be clear, my question was less about making the score.
I understand.
You know, are there?
Creating sure the student growth is important.
Well, of course, right, but I, I understand that, like, ten percent. Uh, it's more, uh, conservative soil index, you know, or other areas, I think there's some, you know, fine detailed stuff, or other areas on an index that we can look at and be like, okay, here's, here's an insight maybe you can draw. Um, that might not necessarily lead to a seven point, you know, in that total swing, but, you know, we do them a small stuff, you know?
I think what we could probably do to help with that is, a lot of the things that you see on a regular basis are, again, reading up driving factor there, but there is a question like, hmm, why is it that our students, we don't score higher on, um, college and career rates? And so like some of the ECE classes you're seeing at PNC are driven by, maybe we're not offering enough opportunities for students, you know, and so I think some of the things we can do is maybe somehow tie the other work we can see, how that might show up in, uh, how we're being valued, because while I don't wanna gain the system, that is how the state and federal government judges at the schools, you know, and so I, I do wanna be meaningful in how we do it, but I think we can try and tie some of that in in how we present it to you, um, and, and make it so it's not just once a year that you can kind of see and hear those, but how that kind of factors in to some of the other work that, that you're kind of saying, so I appreciate that point. Um, the other thing we left off, you know, they're eighty one point eight, and region fourteen seventy eight point five. Um, I think those are the two that we're left off, but seven tenths of a point. So I didn't remember that off the top of my head. Yes. Those are easy ones, that's okay. But he will.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. I look forward to seeing that seventeen percent. Again, we have our defined Board of Ed, Board of Finance meeting, they always ask about returning uninvestment, and that certainly creates, um, a good current investment, so thank you very much for all the hard work that everyone is doing. Um, next we have approval of minutes, may have a motion to the November twenty fifth, twenty twenty four regular meeting minutes. Thank you, Steve. Do I have a second? Anyone? I think you found, appreciate it. All right, any comments or suggestions in the minutes?
I'll just make a quick comment, that, um, I missed, uh, the deadline to give Mr. Maglio my, my feedback. Um, there are four minor changes, mostly grammatical, uh, one, uh, where I find I don't vote. If you notice the difference between what's in print versus what was sent to you, that's one.
All right, all those in favor? Um, next we have information and proposals, board committee reports, policy and curriculum committee. Um, Ms. Heather required not make it tonight, so Dr. Chipetta is gonna give a brief summary of tonight's meeting.
Um, so tonight at PNC, um, the committee continued to, um, look at the new courses that were proposed by Dr. George and his team. Um, and next, at the next board meeting, those new court holds will, will come here, uh, to the board's role of year.
Right. Any questions for Dr. Chipetta? All right, next we have the feasibility study committee, and Dr. Romano is up this time.
The feasibility, they can be met, uh, December third, to interview the question manager applicants for the study, um, and interview two applicants recommended one that we discussed tonight, and we'll be voting on later. Next on the agenda is, um, that we are, that's on the contract, and they will, I think, be working schedule, uh, public kickoff meeting, and it's going to be determined in the future. Preview of coming.
Great, thank you. Any questions for? For someone who has a record here. Who have so, taking the time to serve. I'm going to have the superintendent's report.
Well, start with a snow day, uh, that was snow day, right, December, uh, maybe atypical. Um, but courage of all that's watching, that if you haven't registered your cell phone number to receive text messages and phone calls, that time is upon us. Um, and just appreciate the communication between our transportation fighters and the channels, um, if you try to make those decisions. Um, we make it very early, and I'm appreciative that Mr. Martino, now, our only one talking at four a.m., we have people out there with us helping us make those decisions. Um, second, I'd like to talk a little bit, uh, our aquatic, uh, facility is maybe not approaching the end of the project, but it is approaching the end of the time that we should occupy it. Um, and, um, we are going to open that pool, it will not be a hundred percent complete, there's some decisions we've made unintentionally to prioritize anything that we need to do to get students in to anything that is secondary, um, can happen, kind of um, either significantly or can be postponed. Um, you know, all the frustration that we've had over the last five to seven weeks, I'd say, um, we have planned out that we'll, there's supplemental heat, um, we appreciate the problem solving that we need to pumping in additional heat, because the main heating system is not available yet. So there's blowers outside, heating the air, um, there's supplemental heat, heating the pool, and then as system color line, we'll transition that. We will, we have our final, uh, fire inspection, um, and, uh, building inspection on Wednesday at two o'clock. And we are very optimistic that the timeframe after that will be fast. Um, I did communicate our director today, uh, and, um, we are gonna meet with them on Wednesday afternoon, off of the facility. Um, and I am optimistic that later in the week, they will be able to get practicing there, do some work through the locker rooms, make sure those are available as well. Um, and the big main stumbling blocks right now are, we don't have a significant occupancy from the building inspector. Um, fire alarms have to be tested, uh, but the water temperature is still not warm enough to swim in, so I'm optimistic that over the next forty eight hours, we can get that uh, to about a seventy eight point five degree part, um, and, uh, we can move forward. Um, and the last piece, you know, um, this is the last meeting of twenty twenty four. Um, I feel that it, it's been a crazy year when you start to reflect on where we were. Um, I feel like this has been, you know, Dr. Chipetta talked a lot, that we're seeing growth um, occurring in places that we've been working at for multiple years. Um, so on the academic side, I feel like we saw a lot of growth. Um, and then on the facility side, you have a different school district than you had in twenty twenty three. Um, and it's just been, um, I don't know that we're gonna be able to actually say the polls out in twenty twenty four, um, but I do think, you know, we'll occupy it in twenty twenty four, and, and I do think, think that we also occupied it in, you know, the winter of twenty four, um, is a pretty amazing thing. Um, and that when you look at the field down there, um, it's been a pretty good twenty twenty four, the week of fifteen, and I just wanna appreciate all the work that you've been is for, your feasibility study, like, there, there's a lot that, um, someday, someone's gonna look back at the minutes in twenty twenty four, and you're like, I just worked hard that year, and, you know, that's not just the people on our side of the table, and, uh, you know, but everybody in this district, and that wouldn't happen without a board that showed up and rolled their sleeves up and pushed um, and, and participated in, so I just, you know, as we close out in four, just saying thank you to all of you, and thank you to the community, uh, that's watching, and to the administrators and teachers and everybody that shows up there. Um, because still we're going forward, uh, you know, maybe it wasn't twenty twenty, um, but, um, it was, it was, uh, it was a year where we moved a lot of mountains, and so thank you for that. That's all I got.
Question, I'm sorry. Um, and if I, if you said this, I missed it, then the great effects that you're in, you're putting in place relative to the pool. What is the delta on the cost associated with that?
That's on the contract.
We don't know.
I just was seeing like electric bills and heating bills and who's paying for it.
Heating and diesel fire system, that's on the contract, yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you. Next we have board member comments.
So I just wanted to make, because I brushed through it, the pension report last time, and so just clarify. Um, we are assuming six point seven five percent return on investment, the average for our peers is six point six. We are six point five percent funded, and the average for is seventy two point four. There are like dials, right, so if you wanna turn them really wanna be six point six, fine, but then there's implications, because then our fund duration goes down, we'll have to ask the superintendent budget. So really, and my point, the pension funds manager was not in any way alarmed, operations director, our finance director was not alarmed. So, I mean, if you feel like you want it to be six point six is the assumption of return, or you want it to be a certain funded level, and that's kind of a conversation to report to have, probably if you like, it's even, because there's all the budget implications, that was the question I made. My second comment is, we committed this last time we met to um, have a conversation about the fees, the athletic fees, um, you know, sooner or later, I think we did put a timeline on that, um, just wanna remind, we did do that, I, I happened to, maybe we could take something off the schedule later in the year and, and have, uh, you know, have a meeting in in January to do that, but before, so. Yeah, I think we said forty five days, I mean, that's kind of, kind of, so puts us to mid-January, but, um,
The table's forty five days.
Well, we gotta start.
At least this one might, we got us timeline, so that we just don't.
I think, well, it needs to be, I think it needs to wrap up, I think, before budget.
Yeah, so we should do something, I would agree with that, it's gonna heads up a lot of numbers.
Um, historically, the two major subcommittees of the Board of Education met in the evenings. Policy and curriculum met and currently still meets prior to our scheduled Board of Ed meetings. Finance and facilities met on the first Wednesday of the month at seven, and then at the request of some, a little earlier in the evening up until last year, when it was proposed and voted on to move finance to noon. I voted against that move then, and still feel that it is not in the overall best interest of the board and the public. Holding finance meetings at noon during the typical workday is restrictive to not, not only myself, but other board members and members of the public who do not have flexible work schedules. These meetings are not recorded in a way that can be easily shared with other board members or the public. So it is incredibly difficult for anyone who would like to participate and who has a job during the typical workday to do so. I feel is a detriment to our board to restrict the participation of any elected member of the Board of Education, and notably the treasurer of the Board of Education, who was elected by the members of this board. Going forward in twenty twenty five, I am asking that the finance committee move the meetings back to evenings and outside of the typical workday hours. I propose we restructure it, much like policy and curriculum, and hold it in the hour prior to a scheduled Board of Ed meeting opposite of policy and curriculum. Since it is unlikely that I will be able to attend a newly rescheduled meeting on Wednesday, I wanted to share that I would have, again, voted against finance being held at noon, and I wanted to share my perspective that when meetings are scheduled in this way, that they essentially exclude a board member. And I hope that it is taken seriously, serious consideration when setting the schedule for twenty twenty five.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, I wanted to take this up if you needed to acknowledge the passing of Ken Barata, um, last month, he was a long time guidance counselor, a long time guidance counselor at Combrad High School, um, and he was actually guidance director until he retired in two thousand and eight. For me personally, he was my guidance counselor, and he was also the, um, class advisor for my graduating class in nineteen ninety four. And I just, I had lucky enough, since he wanted to say a couple of sentences about, about him, um, Ken had a truly special combination of empathy and irreverence, he knew what mattered, he knew what to shake off, and he had a rap with here, one of the schools to the other. Um, but I think what really, um, was defined Mr. Barata to me, and I think to this region, was just how much he cared about his students. I remember one time I kept in touch with him after, after I graduated, and he actually told me that he, he was the person that they used to do it for, he was actually one of Redman's graduation. And I have actually a really hard time not choking up when I read those names, because I know how much work every student for dinner, which is, and I just thought that really, uh, was a nice way to remember Ken and all that he gave, um, to this, to this school, to this community, with reading me. Look, I'm very lucky that he gave to me too. I just wanted to say.
Anyone else need comments? I have three. One, I just a reminder to all the Board of Ed members that they, we are hosting or co-hosting our Legislative Breakfast on Wednesday, December eleventh, from eight a.m. to nine fifteen. It will be in Waterbury at Crosby High School Media Center. Again, we're, we're co-hosting it because I'm co-area one directors with the Waterbury, um, Board of Ed person. Um, Senator Bell will be there as well, that's our newly elected Jason Brooks phone, he's already following through on his promises to be there. Um, so I know that a bunch of board members have signed up, um, so thank you, and if you need any directions or anything, please let me know, and I will see you there, along with, uh, Mr. Smith will be there, right? He's due need to sign up. There is an email that went out. It's at eight a.m. on Wednesday, till nine fifteen at Crosby High School in the media center. Um, second, um, is the Board of Ed forums, um, that said doubt dates um, to the Board of Ed for various, I think they're in January, all of January, so make sure you go back to Jen Maglio about any that you would like to attend. The third point, um, is about the pool, uh, which has just been a, a constant, um, almost daily conversation with Joe and Josh, and I just wanna say how much I appreciate the amount of effort and demand for out of the box thinking that you guys have brought to the table. Um, understanding that the pool is not just a commercial venture, it is the heart of our community. Um, you guys have taken that very seriously. Just appreciate all the extra effort and care, um, and pressure, um, that you guys have endured and have put upon people. Um, so thank you, um, for all of that.
There's stuff that's up breaking while we're trying to do the pool.
I just really appreciate both of you guys and all the effort that you put in, um, because it is such an important part of, um, of our community, so, thank you. Um, and for the workshop, I did close dates the last time that we talked about it, in January. Um, I gotta double check with Joe to make sure he can see, do those dates and pull the numbers by those dates, and some January dates out, and then I'll get those um, I'll hold the board as to what dates might work, um, for the workshop of the things. Right, so I guess it was four points, sorry. All right, any other comments? All right, next we have comments from citizens, and we've stayed away longer than everyone else and stuff, so, um, so there's no one here for comments. And next we have regular business requiring board And next we have regular business requiring board action. They have a motion for approval of construction manager to conduct the GES, PES feasibility study.
Move that the Board of Education approve Newfield Construction as the construction manager for the GES, PES feasibility study. As recommended by the GES, PES feasibility study committee.
Great. Thank you for that, for the second. Um, any discussion? All those in favor? I. Any needs, any extensions? It is unanimous. Thank you. And congratulations to Newfield. We look forward to working with you. Um, next we have a note to the future meetings. Um, this week on Wednesday, December eleventh, finance is meeting at twelve o'clock. Monday, January thirteenth, PNC meets at High School Media Center at six thirty. Also, Monday, January thirteenth, we have our regular Board of Ed meeting, well, at seven thirty, where we will be doing our enrollment report. Monday, January twenty seventh, PNC meet at six thirty, and also Monday, January twenty seventh, we have a regular Board of Ed meeting again at seven thirty. Where we will have our mental health assessment and climate survey. They have a motion to adjourn, motion to adjourn. Any second?
Six seconds.
Thank you, Steve. Any, okay, all those in favor? All right, do you have a statement, everyone?